Good evening and welcome to Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley, Chair of God at Center Committee of the Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Father, I first come to you thanking you for this fall, for the beautiful weather, for a successful Santa Calagon. Lord, thank you for those that worked, volunteered, and for the pride of our city there. Thank you for our nation and for our city that we're so fortunate to live in, and for those that have been placed in a role of leadership. Lord, bring truth to our leaders and to ourselves, our citizens. I pray that you will open hearts so that we can receive truth with prudence and confidence. Take away any confusion, fear, anything that is a barrier to understand and see your leading. Give to each of us a purpose, a faith that propels us in your ways, and guide us with wisdom. Let us have a service for one another with mercy and grace. And finally, Lord, according to Philippians 4:8, keep our minds on whatever is true, pure, right, holy, friendly, and proper. You're worthy of praise, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, we're here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Make motion to suspend our rules to move the proclamations up to the next item on the agenda, and also to allow those outside of the city to speak.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion to suspend the rules so that we have proclamations and resolutions presented now, and also to allow citizens outside the city to speak when we do citizens' request. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the motion carries six in favor, zero opposed. Our first presentation is by, for the Susan P. Block Award, presented by, to be presented to Charlotte Oleko, by Susan Ray, the past president of the Junior Service League from 2022 to 2023, and the chair of the Susan P. Block Distinguished Public Service Award Committee. Susan, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As Mayor Rowland said, my name is Susan Ray. I am here on behalf of the Junior Service League of Independence where I am the immediate past president. As the immediate past president, I have the honor of presenting the 2025 Susan Paxton Block's Distinguished Service Award. This award is given to an independent city employee, volunteer, or public official who has been nominated for achieving significant efficiency in the operations of a program or process, improving service, customer responsiveness, cost savings, developing a new program that meets a community need, or goes above and beyond what is normally expected of the job. This year's recipient of the Susan Paxton Block Distinguished Service Award is Charlotte Oleko. Charlotte is a Horticultural 3 with the city's Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department. She's been with the city for 21 years, and her love for the city can be seen all around Independence as she designs, installs, and oversees the maintenance of many of the landscape beds at the city's facilities, parks, and historical sites. Thanks to her, the Vale Arboretum is accredited, and the City of Independence continues to be designated as a Tree City USA on an annual basis. With that, I'd like to congratulate Charlotte on this honor.
Charlotte, would you be willing to come up and have a picture taken with Susan?
Sure.
Okay. Sure.
The council's invited to take a picture with Charlotte?
Act like you like each other. There you go.
There we go here. One, two, three. One, two. One. No, I can't. Nope. There was like that face on the other side of the guy.
Thank you.
I do, I've got it right there, then we'll get it approved and then we'll present it.
A resolution recognizing Michelle Carpenter, Telecommunicator 2/Acting Emergency Communications Supervisor for the Independence Police Department, as the I-Star Award recipient for September 2025.
Yep, and could we take a roll call for the resolution, then we'll give the resolution? Yep, could I get a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second. Can we call the roll, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the resolution passes six in favor, zero opposed. And we are very proud to nominate Michelle Carpenter, Telecommunicator 2, and Acting Emergency Communications Supervisor for this award. Michelle is an amazing teammate who has a special talent for bringing people together. She makes sure everyone feels heard, seen, and valued. She works hard and often behind the scenes to make her team better and to improve the entire workplace. One of Michelle's best qualities is her ability to lead with compassion. After attending a conference last year, she came back with a fresh outlook and big goals for 2025. Her main goals were to improve our dispatch team's culture, make our training better for our team members, and to find ways to improve our daily work. Not only did she meet these goals, but she continues to build on them in lasting and meaningful ways. Michelle has a servant's heart, which means she genuinely cares about helping others. She is approachable, understanding, and always listens carefully to her team members, to, excuse me, to her team's suggestions and concerns. She truly believes in helping both her coworkers and citizens and the first responders we serve. Her dedication is clear to everyone who works with her, especially during important incidents. She is an inspiration to us all and truly represents the values we hold in public safety So it is my honor to read the resolution. Whereas the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas, an employee committee selects the I-Star Independence Service Teamwork and Above Responsibilities Award, this recipient for their exemplary qualities and ideals that best represent public service. And whereas, the Service Recognition Committee has selected Michelle Carpenter and the Independence Police Department for the I-Star Award in September 2025. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council as follows, that she is in fact the recipient passed the second day of September 2025. So with that, we want to honor you, Ms. Carpenter. State Representative Will Job and his two sons right over here to my left and your right in the chamber, and they're here for Cub Scouts, and then they have a Cub Scout meeting after this, but you came by to say hello to us, so we are glad to have you here, and thank you for your service. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, with that being said, we've also got a proclamation for National Preparedness And this proclamation, and whereas, the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase awareness and the importance of preparing for disasters and encourage individuals to take action. And whereas, the City of Independence will not truly be prepared for disaster until every individual and family and business takes personal responsibility for being prepared. And whereas, all residents of the City of Independence should take steps to prepare for emergencies as residents must have the ability to care for themselves and their loved ones for an extended period of time during emergency, such as making a plan, building an emergency kit, and learning more about disaster preparedness. And whereas, the City of Independence also officially recognizes the many volunteers involved with medical, excuse me, the Medical Reserve Corps of Greater Kansas City, the Independence Community Emergency Response Team, the Emergency Communications Service Group, and the Command Staff Volunteers who routinely offer their invaluable services to making our community safer. Therefore, this council recognizes National Preparedness Month this month, and it is our honor to give this proclamation. Please come forward, and please state your address.
Hello, everybody. Aaron Mason, Director of Mid-Conton Public Library. My address is, yikes, 11301 Raytown, ZIP Code 64138. Is that what you want, or do you want my work address?
That's close enough. You could have given the library's address, that's fine, too.
You can come visit me anytime. It doesn't matter. But thank you, Mayor Rowland, and councilmembers. Before you today is a resolution, and we want to thank you for crafting that resolution and voting on it. And over the past several months, we've had many conversations with stakeholders and received valuable feedback on our proposal to relocate our headquarters to Independence Square. These conversations have informed our plans for new headquarters and further solidified our belief that a move to the square will add value to both the library and the City of Independence. For those of you that aren't aware, for nearly 60 years, Independence has been the home of our administrative offices, and we're deeply appreciative for that support. I mean, one could argue that without that support, we wouldn't have grown to be the library system that we are today, serving three counties. We're a world-class library, and there's much to be proud of, of the work that we've done over this time. So this resolution before you today is yet another example of the strong collaborative spirit that has long connected the city and the library. If realized, it's our belief that this project has the potential to be a catalyst for Independence Square, bringing 150 library employees to the heart of downtown and creating a new energy, foot traffic, and opportunity for surrounding businesses. Your support today helps set that stage for a bright future, one where our presence downtown fuels both the library's mission and the continued revitalization of Independence Square. We look forward to continuing these productive conversations and exploring all that's possible together. So, under five minutes, and that completes my remarks. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Next up is Lucy Young.
I'm here to talk about 25-785 with the library resolution. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. The problem is, we don't know anything about it. The letter of intent, or the letter asking for the letter of intent, was sent on August the 8th, and this is the first that the public has even had a chance to think about it. And I have one very important question for you. If the building is going to be vacated by December 2025, as projected, where is a municipal court going to be held? You can hold the city council meetings with the terrible audio over at the IUC, you can hold the planning and zoning over at the IUC, but where are you going to hold municipal court? I think that is a very important question. When we served on the GeoBond Committee, we were told there was no Plan B. Well, if this is Plan B, please clue us in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Sorenson. And then Marla, you're on deck.
Oh, thank you.
My name's, my name's Bob Sorenson. I live at 800 Southwest Powell, Oak Grove, Missouri. I'm the immediate past president of the Loggers Retirement Group and still serve on the Executive Board. I'm here to speak today on the, seems to be a yearly basis, on the things, the items eight, nine, and 10 on the consent agenda, and I'm asking for the council and the mayor's support on these items. I just wanted to speak briefly on it and to add some things that I believe the council might know, and I know Councilman Fears does, because he attended our Staywell meeting, and we went over some figures with him. On the item number eight, that's where we have, in the post-65 health insurance, a company bought out the Prescription D medicine, Prescription D plan along with the Advantage Plan, and they said that they would honor the contract that Cigna had submitted prior to that year, that that plan would not go up more than 5%, which is a decrease from last year as far as a Prescription D medicine. And they honored that, and the increase was 5% in regards to that. Item number eight is what I really wanted to speak about briefly tonight. I know there's been a lot of things going around in regards to the item number eight, in regards to what was said, was told, was a 30% increase in the medical plan with Cigna for the post-65 members. And that is partially true, but when you go to open enrollment in retirees and active employees, they pick their insurance plan, they look at what the premiums are going to be. The premiums for post-65 had always been, Cigna had both things, and this year, early this year, they sold off part of it to another company, which is number eight. So it is a fact that 30% increase has occurred to the healthcare portion of post-65, but when you put them together, which was always done in the past, the increase for post-65 health insurance is truly 15.2%. And that's important to know because people hear 30% here and 5% here, oh, it's 35% or, oh, my gosh, but when you add them together, because the Prescription D coverage is much more expensive than the medical coverage. So when the Prescription D goes up, it's a huge increase; when the medical goes up, it's not. And we were shocked, I know none of you want an increase, we have seen decreases in the medical part the last three years, we've never seen an increase like this, and we were shocked to hear about it, but we had been given advanced information with meetings with Cigna throughout the year, that the custom plan was operating poorly this year, and there would be increases. They never gave us a percentage on that. I think those are important things for the council to know, because sometimes you can change figures round and round, and you can make them sound different ways, but that truly is the impact, it's 15.2%. Mr. Fears did the numbers, and so did Jonathan from CBiz at the Staywell meeting, and they agreed it was a 15.2, and it was not the 30 and plus the 5 or whatever. And I'd also like to encourage supportive of number 10, because we do have a lot of retirees that are pre-65 retirees, and it's important for the Staywell to keep running strong. And it appears to me, when going to Staywell meetings and watching that throughout this last year, and the committees that we served on prior to this, there has been changes made in Staywell, and it is operating more in the plus now, where we were always operating in the minus, and I think there has been vast improvements in the Staywell plan. That's all I have for you tonight, and I thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Marla Kimsey. I reside at 25605 Southwest Wyatt Road in Blue Springs, Missouri. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My comments are also related to Agenda Items 8, 9, and 10 for all medical employees, and in particular, I'm going to address the post-65 retirees. Before I speak to these issues, I want to offer my comments on two of your city associates and the work that they do. Bethany Dickie is the benefits administrator for the city. Due to the sale of the Part D prescription drug plans and Advantage Plans, Bethany is going to be dealing with another vendor this year. She also has already scheduled four meetings for the retirees instead of two, and during enrollment, because we have a new vendor, and she knows there's going to be a lot of questions. Bethany also took the time this past week to call into the Cigna meeting on August 26. She was on vacation. Last year, the budget numbers were approved on July 15. Yes, this year, they're coming to you for approval on 9/2, and she's going to be putting this together in a much smaller window for everyone, a much smaller window. The second person that I would like to comment is the Finance Director, Melissa Cabrera. Melissa met with Janet Conroe and myself last week on Thursday, August 28. She scheduled to meet with us within two days' notice, and she spent two hours of her busy time reviewing the post-65 numbers with us, and much time in providing the additional detail that she's added to the agenda tonight for everyone to read. I have to tell you, I had one other meeting with Melissa, and what I find every time I meet with her, and she has, her time is very valuable, is she always makes you feel like she's excited that you're interested in the numbers. And she always puts in the time to break them up and talk to you about them. I mean, how many people do that? Thanks a lot, Melissa. I appreciate it. The post-65 retiree medical plan increase of 15.2% across the board is nothing we've ever experienced in the past six years. In fact, for the prior three years, the medical plan experienced decreases. In 2023, it went down 1%. In 2024, it went down 3.39%, and in 2025, it went down minus 0.20%. Over the last six years, this plan, the medical piece, has gone up $15.15. So this is a huge shock for us, the increase this year. We're not pleased about it, but we believe we've always tried to stay right within our goals. It's, one thing to also say is that during our meeting with Cigna on 8/26, Cigna did announce in the meeting, and I believe, Jared, you were there, too, that they were increasing the credit for their error from $5,000 to $50,000. It has to be validated by the city, and couldn't be part of the agenda total but tonight, but it will also be able to reflect an additional reduction to the increase.
You have one minute, ma'am.
We're asking for you to vote yes for Agenda Items 8, 9, and 10. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jeff Beckler.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I am representing the developer on terrace crossing apartments, and I just wanted to come here and tell you that I was before you all last year for a resolution of support and received that. We are trying again. We feel like our application is going to be a little bit more competitive this year in that process, so we're very excited to be back to help fill that housing study that you all have completed, and we've completed our own. There is quite a bit of a gap there for safe and affordable housing, and that's what we're trying to help attempt to fill, although it is very large, but we are excited, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you again on this agenda item, and I'm not sure if questions can be asked at this portion, but I just wanted to be here in case you all had any.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move for approval of the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Second. We've got a motion and a second for the reports and recommendations to City Manager. Does anyone wish to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can you please pull Resolution 25-784 and 25-785?
So the two resolutions you'd like to have pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Items 8, 9, and 10.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Can we pull item number 11?
Yes, thank you. Anyone else, other items? Going once, going twice, all right. We've got a motion and a second before us for the consent agenda, let's do that, and then we'll take all the other items as individually presented. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, six in favor, zero opposed, and I will just, if I may, Councilmember Stewart, you asked first, but is it okay if I just go in straight order of what we have in front of us on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears, you asked for Eight, Nine, and Ten, the floor is yours, please proceed.
Make a motion to approve Eight, Nine, and Ten.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I did attend, have the opportunity to attend the Staywell meeting last week, and there was a lot of discussion about this, as well as Cigna and the changes, and, and so I do think that these are all connected, we really need to approve them all at the same time, but Mr. City Manager, I wondered if you might just frame especially this, these items, talk a little bit more about what is coming before us and what we're doing in approving these, and especially, I'm interested in where the money, since we didn't budget for this kind of an increase, where the money's going to come from.
Certainly, having gained the approval of Marla Kimsey, I think our Director of Finance should come and speak to this issue.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, I am Melissa Cabrera, your Director of Finance. So one of the things that Marla and I worked through when we had our meeting was sitting down and working through what the actual budgetary impact would be, and I broke that apart by fund, so you will see an addendum or a supplemental information that was added on to the agenda tonight that would explain that. So we budget a 10% increase in the budget each year for health insurance, that includes what goes for retirees as well as employee, current employee health insurance, and that usually gives us enough of a cushion that it softens any budgetary impact if there is something unexpected that happens, and generally, the increases fall between 9% and 10%. So the increase that we had, and yes, we have combined those amounts together to show that they are the 15.2% and, and when you net them together, so we had a 10% budget, 10% increase budgeted. Total budgetary impact right now is $81,813 across all funds, and with the breakout that you can see here, we're confident that we will be able to find budgetary savings in each of those funds to where we should not need any supplementer, supplemental appropriations or additional appropriations this year. Things happen, things change, generally with the retiree health insurance, they come in a little bit less than budget, just because things change, people change plans, stuff happens throughout the year that, that has resulted in, in them not exceeding budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Items Eight, Nine, and Ten? And Mr. City Councilor, we didn't take Eight, Nine, and Ten as a group this time, we didn't have a motion that way, we had a motion for one item, should we take another motion?
No, I moved Eight, Nine, and Ten.
Did you? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that to make sure that we're in, in business and don't miss the deadline.
Yes, we're assuming that, that no one objects to taking them all together, then yes, you're good to go.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Councilmember, thank you very much. Anyone else on Eight, Nine, and Ten? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for Eight, Nine, and Ten on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and Items Eight, Nine, and Ten are approved, six in favor, zero opposed, this brings us to item number 11. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11 is council action to approve an RFP to begin looking for a search committee that will help guide us in a process for seeking our next city manager. The subcommittee has met twice, and we have worked through the RFP. I am confident that we have answered all the questions of the members of the council that was provided in advance to the rest of the, to the rest of the council, and have not received any other questions. I think it is a well-written document, and I am pleased to present this for approval to the council.
Any further questions on item number 11?
So, so that was my motion to approve item number 11.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion on item number 11? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, item number 11 is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number 25-784, Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Motion to approve item 25-784.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Councilmember, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so we voted on something similar to this one year ago, can you explain why we're having to vote on it again, and kind of what the difference is between last year and this year?
Certainly, Councilmember, as you mentioned, last year, the council voted on a resolution of support for this project. The developer was seeking affordable housing tax credits from the state of Missouri, and that's what the council's resolution of support was. Those tax credits are competitive, and unfortunately, this project came up a few points shy of being awarded those tax credits last year. The developer looked at the feedback from the state and what would help them gain more points to reach that necessary level of approval, and one of those items in there were, in many cases where these projects do receive the tax credits, the, the city will waive the building permit fees for those projects, so the developer asked if we would be agreeable to that, and so this resolution tonight would grant city staff the authority to provide that fee waiver to the developer.
Okay, thank you. So I did support this last year, however, I don't believe I'm going to be voting, I'm not going to be voting for this tonight due to the fact that of the waiver fee of the building permits, and also, we did receive a letter from the interim superintendent, I'm sorry, interim superintendent of the Independent School District that has concerns that this housing addition is going to put strain on the district, so for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this tonight. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-784?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you tell us roughly what those building permit fees waived, what that would estimate of what that would be?
With your indulgence, I would ask our Community Development Director to come forward and help provide a quick estimate on that.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Tom Scannell, Community Development Director. So the estimated building permit fee for this project is a little over $90,000. There may be some other fees associated with some of the ancillary permits, but to answer the question to construct the building with the 60 units, a little over $90,000.
And so on a project like this, is it common that, you know, city would be asked to waive those expenses like this, and have we done this in other cases?
So we have done this in, in other situations where the city as part of an incentive package have waived the building permit fees to a certain percentage, this falls in, in line with what we've done in other projects.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you very much. So last year, we provided a letter of support, so I just want people to know what we're voting on. This would just be the city council saying that to the state of Missouri, yes, we think low-income housing is important, and we are willing to have this developer build this in this location in our city. Still has to go through planning, it still has to go through all of the other processes that would be important for a building, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. This is, I think, a little bit unique in that they have partnered with Community Services League to provide wraparound services should anybody in the building need that, which I think makes this an extra special opportunity. I am very sensitive to the school district's needs for being able to support kids in classrooms. This was a project that I was interested in and visited with Mr. Beckler when he came last year and again this year, with the intent that housing is getting harder and harder for our families who are already in our district to find, and their intent is to offer this to families that are already in our school district with kids in this area, so that they are actually providing high-quality housing for them. We know that there is just an absolute shortage of it, especially in 4th District, so I am going to be happy to vote for this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else of further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-784.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and Resolution 25-784 passes five in favor and one opposed. That brings us to Resolution 25-784, Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Stand by, I'm trying to get my notes back up. Mr. City Manager, I only really had one question about this. It keeps saying over and over again, and the where, and I'm not making the where's this, but it says a portion of city-owned property located at 111 West Maple, can, so are they not buying the entire property here?
How I would frame this, Councilmember, is, is the resolution that's in front of the, the body this evening is seeking direction from the council as to whether or not you would like us to continue this conversation. So the library has identified the need for new space, obviously, as you heard from the speaker tonight, they cover a three-county area and several communities within that. We've been fortunate to have them in Independence and think it's to our advantage to retain them in this community. What we didn't want to do as staff is get too far down the road without the council's approval for continuing that conversation, so I'm not being evasive to your question, it's just that that would need to be negotiated as, if these conversations are blessed to continue, how much space the library would need to acquire to meet their needs.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve 25-785.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve 25-785, any further discussion? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, just, Mr. City Manager, just to be clear, so we're not approving the sale of anything here, all we're doing is approving the ability for you to have discussions to further that conversation, and then you'll come back to us at some appropriate time if, if you reach an agreement that is good for both parties, is that apparent?
That's, that's correct. We, we don't want to proceed too far down that, that line of conversation, give the, the library the sense that we were negotiating in bad faith if the council was not agreeable to that conversation even taking hold, so this is really a check-in with the body to make sure you're on board with at least pursuing that dialogue further, but there would need to be additional conversations, negotiations, and approval by this body before anything was close to finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that MidConne Public Library did a facilities assessment, and the cost of repairing the, I think it's 55-year-old structure that they have up on 24 was more than the cost of building a brand-new building, much as the conversation that we have been having about repairing this building because of its intense foundation issues. Certainly want to be sure that we think that this site can be remediated so that they don't end up with foundation issues if they build a building on the same spot.
I, I would say, yes, the, the library's going to certainly want to do a lot of, of work to make sure that this meets their needs from all perspectives, but again, just wanted to come up for air and check in with the body and get that conversations blessing from the council before we went too far down the road.
And I wanted to speak to Ms. Young's comment that, that she hasn't seen drawings or proposals, that's in part because we are in the exploratory portion of this, and one thing I know about the MidConne Public Library is that they are very good about getting public input, and I know that there will be opportunities for the public to see drawings and understand renderings and how it would fit on this site, so I am happy to support the continuation of your conversation, so thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo some of the comments that have been made regarding this project, I want to say thank you to the MidConne Public Library, they reached out, oh, almost eight weeks ago, their legal service director reached out to the council, wanted to have some low-level conversations with the council, most of us were able to attend those, just to get some good, basic information of their thoughts and ideas, and they did some follow-up conversations with our community groups and Peninsula Square Association, just to get some low-level feedback before we make any, any other movements, so that has brought us here today to, to further those conversations, a long way to go, but I think the community partner, MidConne Public Library, is most certainly a worthy person to speak with and to see how this conversation goes and to move it forward.
Very good. Anyone else other further discussion? The only, only thing that I ask, and Mr. City Manager, you know, I, pardon me, you and I have had this discussion with regards to the Japanese Sister City and protecting that property, you know, we've had our neighbors from halfway around the world who worked on that property and made the Japanese Sister City site, and I would ask, you know, publicly that that be respected and protected in the process, and that's, you know, that's just my public ask in that regard, so, thank you very much. Anyone else other further discussion?
If I can, Mr. Mayor, so regarding the, the garden that we have there, now this site is going to be completely remediated, and what's the timeframe, would you say on that, Mr. City Manager?
So we are scheduled right now to have all of our functions that are moving to Independence Municipal Commons in there, I would say certainly by the end of the year and probably sooner than that, but let's just say by the end of this calendar year. The function, one of those that's not moving, and that was mentioned tonight, and I do want to touch on that briefly, our, our plan, and we are working to get this communication put together, our communications team does have some information in the works that we're going to be sharing, but go ahead and share this publicly as well, our plan is to move Municipal Court into the multipurpose room of the police headquarters, which is right across the street here. Because the general obligation bond did not pass for question one, that building will still be there, so it's a rooftop, we're still, when I say a rooftop, it's a building we're still maintaining, a records unit was going to be staying there already anyway, so that will actually give us some efficiencies of having our municipal court personnel married in the same place with our records unit personnel, and then be able to set up for municipal court in that, that multipurpose room. So I would certainly say by the beginning of, of January or somewhere in that first quarter of 2026, we need to start looking at remediation, demolition of this building. So just to be clear, the library is not interested in moving in, in this building, it has the same structural issues that it's always had, this would be a demolition of this building and then new construction on some portion of this site.
So with, with that, Mayor, I think we need to find a respectful relocation of, of the garden at some point, if this whole area is going to be remediated, and I believe that they have significant funding to do that, so we may have to look at a respectable place for that, if this whole area is going to be demoed and demolished and reworked, just future conversations that we must have.
Yeah, we'll have future conversations on that, but that's not my wish in any shape or form, and as you know, with democracy, we can have respectful or form, and as you know, with democracy, we can have respectful disagreements, and at this moment, we have one of those. So with anyone else want to make discussions on that? Very good. Councilmember Stewart, do you have anything else you'd like to say before we move to that motion?
No, sir.
Thank you. Before us, Resolution 25-785, and we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
I will vote with respect to that garden being respected, so I'll vote yes. 25-785 passes, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our regular agenda items. We have a public hearing, this is a full public hearing, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing on proposed property tax rates to be set by the City of Independence for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, based on the current assessed valuation by Jackson and Clay Counties, full public hearing.
Please proceed.
Good evening, again, Mayor, members of the council. I am Melissa Cabrera, Director of Finance. Just like we have done the past few years, I've put together a presentation to go over the property tax levy and just have a discussion with you all. This is probably one of the larger groups that we've had, so glad everyone could join us tonight. So tonight, we're going to go over the process, what the preliminary levy rates are, what our limitations are, STC ruling comparisons, and then a breakdown of what that tax levy looks like for taxpayers. So the process to set the levy, the city can only set the levy for what has already been authorized by voters. There you go. Okay? And we are required to hold a public hearing more than seven days prior to setting the levy, so this is what satisfies that portion of it. We should be receiving any day now the final assessed valuation from Jackson County, so before we can set the final levy rate, we have to have the final assessed valuation numbers back from the BOE. I have not received those yet, so they should be coming in the next day or two. Once that's done, then we can go through the pro forma calculation with the Missouri Auditor's Office, and they will verify that the levy has been set to the correct rate, and then we have to provide that information to the county by 10/1, and then tax bills are prepared and mailed out no later than November 1st of each year to taxpayers. We receive a preliminary assessed valuation in July, so that's what we have used here, and I apologize, I know these numbers are very small, it's very difficult to get them to a larger size, but I will read that off for everyone, just to make sure you can read it. So based off of the preliminary AV in July, we expect the general revenue to be .3281 per $100 of assessed value. The public health and recreation will be .1546, and this year, because we are issuing debt for those GO bonds, we will also have a debt service levy of .1829. And then you can see down at the bottom, we do have an additional levy that just is for the Independence Square Business District, which is .5679. I will note that with the exception of the debt service levy, because AV has increased, we are limited in how much growth we can see each year, so each of these levies has been rolled back slightly from what was set last year. We did notice in the examiner that we were having a public hearing tonight that was on 8/20, and this is just an example of what we send out to the examiner so that everyone can review it. So, the limitations that we have with the Hancock Amendment, if the assessed valuation of the property excluding new construction and improvements increases by a larger percentage than the Consumer Price Index, then a rollback of the tax is required. So that's exactly what happened. So the State Tax Commission set that CPI this year at 2.9%. So excluding new construction, we are not allowed to see more tax collections higher than 2.9%. And I will explain here in a second why that's important, and you know, you may have some taxpayers out there that are like, wait a second, my tax is higher than 2.9%, it's going up more than that. It's not level for everyone, so different taxpayers may see an increase, some taxpayers may see a decrease, but overall, it's a 2.9% increase. Some of the issues that have been ongoing, a judge ruled in the State Tax Commission's favor and ruled that Jackson County must roll back certain assessments that were in excess of 15%. So if you remember, there is a rule that if a assessment increases by more than 15%, that taxpayer has the option to request an interior inspection to their property. And one thing I want to note, that these are just the preliminary rates, so I have, you know, let you know here that we will be coming back with those final rates, so we will see a change from what is presented tonight to the final levy amounts just based off of what that final AV is. So funds that are supported by the property tax, just as a note, these amounts that are here are what is included in the budget, they are net of collection fees and of non-payments. So for the general fund, we expect to receive around $6,400,000. The Parks and Rec tax should receive about $1.9 million, and then the health property tax will receive about $900,000. And then, of course, we anticipate raising about $3.3 million for debt service, so just as a note, when we calculate the debt service, we are allowed to calculate what we know that our next year's principal and interest amounts will be, but also to establish a debt service reserve, just in case something happens to the tax base and we don't receive enough funds. So just as a comparison for home values here, this is a house that has a market value of $100,000. I'm going to pull my notes out here because I just wanted to point out how this might affect individual homeowners here. So on this comparison, this taxpayer will see a $33.52 increase to their tax bill this year, but 34.75 of the increase is due to the debt service levy. So had we not implemented that debt service, they would actually be paying a lower amount to the city on their taxes. It would actually be a 1.3% decrease. Comparatively, on a house with a market value of $150,000, this homeowner would actually have an increase of 8.6% on their taxes due to the city. So this is someone that saw a higher increase, you can see where their market value last year was $136,300, now it's $150,000. So they would see an increase in their total taxable of $63.01, inclusive of debt service, but only $52.13 of that $63.01 is an increase to the city. And lastly, this is a home that has a market value of $228,000 in fiscal year, or this current 2025. They would see an increase to their tax bill of $103.37, and of that amount, 79.23, it would be strictly due to the debt service levy that we're setting this year that was not there last year, and they would be seeing a 13% increase in their tax due to the city. And then this is just a breakdown of how the taxes are paid by an independent taxpayer. You can see that the biggest chunk of that goes to the Independence School District at 73.2%. This year, with the debt service levy, they would be paying the city 9.4% exclusive of that debt service, though. The city is the third highest category, which would have been 6.8%. And then it also breaks out Midcontinent Library at 4.3, Jackson County at 7.8, mental health at 1.3, handicap workshop at 1%, Missouri blind pension at 0.4%, and Metro Junior College at 2.5%. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? Please proceed.
So, once we set our levy, our levy is set. What happens if the county is rolling back assessments once we've set our levy? This is just such a challenging problem that municipalities and school districts are just struggling their way through. Do we have any timeframe on these decisions or potential impacts?
I looked at the city manager, I don't have specific information, I have not received any communication on what that looks like. I know some of the rollbacks have been included in the assessed valuations. One of the things that I was interested in doing this year was recruitment, because now we're not growing our tax levy based off of accurate assessments because there have been changes to it, but when we reached out to the county, we still don't have final 2023 and 2024 AVs because things are still working their way through BOE.
So the long and the short of it is, we may end up with considerably less money than we would normally have because these assessments are in flux. My question is, could there be a clawback provision?
Yes, and we have seen some clawbacks, and so I don't have the exact number that we saw in the last fiscal year, so since we closed out what was set for the 2024 levy, and I'm sorry, this gets somewhat confusing because we're setting the 2025 levy, but I'm talking in 26 fiscal year numbers. So I apologize because that does get a little bit confusing sometimes. I can go back and I can find out what the clawback amounts were, but so far, there's not been anything that would substantially reduce our revenues. If something like that were to happen, my assumption would be, it would be something that is temporary, it might cause a short-term fiscal impact, which is why we have worked so hard to get our fund balance reserves to sustainable levels. So in general fund, we're exceeding the 16% minimum, and so that if we had something where we had an unexpected drop in revenues, that would be used to help cover that, so that we can make sure that we have continuity of services in the city. And then, what we would be able to do the next year is go through the process of recruitment and reset what the levy rate should be to try to readjust and get some of those dollars back to us.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, this question is for you. The state legislature created a special commission on property tax, and they have been doing listening sessions, I went to the one here in Jackson County, it was very well-attended. Do we anticipate that that will really upend our calculations, or we think that'll play through a couple of different legislative cycles, or can you read those tea leaves?
The feedback we've gotten thus far is, we anticipate that that will take a little bit to play out, just because of the normal legislative process, the time it takes to receive consensus on, or at least majority support for some of those issues. I know some of the smaller counties have been vocal about rulings and, you know, adverse to them versus what maybe some of the larger counties have experienced, so there is still quite a bit of negotiation taking place, some of the usual issues, rural versus urban, et cetera. So we anticipate it will take a bit to kind of coalesce around a solution.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further discussions on the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Thank you very much, and we've got a new public hearing for new information only, and I'll open that public hearing. Please proceed.
25-076, first reading, an ordinance levying a tax on all real property subject to taxation on January 1, 2025, within the corporate limits of the City of Independence, Missouri, for all general revenue and public health and recreation purposes for general obligation debt, and for the Independence Square Special Benefit District, said levies and assessments being separate and distinct, all for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July 2025 and ending on the 30th day of June 2026, first reading.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing for new information only. Mr. City Manager, do we have anyone who's going to present for this?
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 201 East Partridge Avenue from R18/PUD Medium Density Residential/Planned Unit Development and C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, new information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on July 15 of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to correct zoning on a property at 201 East Partridge Avenue. It's a four-story commercial building. The applicant does wish to get a building permit for a perimeter fence, and so this is what that would be correcting for. I have no new information to provide.
Anyone have questions on this item? Okay. With that, I will close that public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-073, please.
25-073, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R18/PUD Moderate Density Residential/Planned Unit Development and District C1 Neighborhood Commercial to District C1 Neighborhood Commercial for the property located at 201 East Partridge Avenue, second reading.
Thank you. Any questions on 25-073? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion on 25-073, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, 25-073 passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to a new public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a convenience store at 11037 East Winter Road, new information only.
Thank you again. This is a special use permit that was also considered by Planning Commission on July 15 of this year. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this special use permit. The applicant wishes to open a convenience store at 11037 East Winter Road in Harvard Avenue. This is in the Arts District for the sale of limited grocery items, prepackaged foods, and food that is prepared on-site. The property is within 500 feet of residential, hence needing the special use permit. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-074, second reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a convenience store at 11037 East Winter Road in Independence, Missouri, second reading.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. You guys, council should have a copy of the amendment that I intend to make, which I'll do right now. Make the motion to amend and place conditions five through nine on the special use permit. The conditions are, there shall be no tobacco sales associated with convenience store, there shall be no tobacco and drug paraphernalia sales associated with this convenience store, there shall be no alcohol sales associated with the convenience store, there shall be no video lottery terminals, gaming devices, gambling devices associated with the convenience store, and nine, the convenience store shall not operate hours between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I've had the opportunity to talk briefly with the applicant. The applicant was very gracious to meet with Inglewood Business Association about six weeks ago before the Planning Commission, so they were able to talk with them and work through some of the neighborhood concerns and some of the concerns that they had. It was a good give-and-take community meeting with the association, so this is the work product from out of those meetings, which I have now submitted, so I'll make that in a form of a motion.
Thank you. We've got a motion for the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the amendment. The amendment is open for discussion. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm just wondering, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you can comment or have someone comment on this or not. I know there's another convenience store there in the Inglewood area, and I'm just wondering if they have the same, you know, do they sell tobacco, do they sell alcohol? That's really my question.
I'm going to see if our community development directors are a little more familiar with their business license. their business license.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm not that familiar with the operations of that nearby convenience store as far as what's sold, what is not sold. So that convenience store, what I can, what information I can provide is that that convenience store has been there for a few years. And I think it even predated the most recent change of the UDO requiring that special use permit whenever you are within 500 feet of residence. So hopefully that's enough information to kind of provide some guidance.
So I guess my concern really surrounds the idea of, you know, are we placing restrictions on this owner of this facility that makes them uncompetitive, you know, and essentially, you know, causes into question whether they can be, you know, competitive and be profitable in their business. I'm not saying that they aren't, but or couldn't be, but hopefully that would be the case. But Councilmember Perkins, I'm understanding from you that the applicant has agreed to these stipulations, or they...
The information that I gave you before the weekend, or during the weekend, and now has not changed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else other further discussion? So just as a point of clarification, Councilmember, in the discussion with the applicant, the applicant is in agreement with these modifications?
Correct.
Okay. Just a point of clarification. Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question for the city attorney. So I kind of have the same, and I understand they agreed, and that's fine. But I kind of have the same concerns. It would make them not competitive because 35%, most convenience stores, 35% of their sales are either tobacco or alcohol. So I kind of, I agree with definitely the drug paraphernalia and the gaming machines. And so my concern is, if at some point they thought, okay, we're not competitive, we're losing business because of this, what would their options be to come back in front of, to actually have this reversed? Would there be any option at that point?
They would have to reapply for a new special use permit and attempt to have it approved without some or all of these restrictions. So, I mean, once this is in place, this is going to be in place for them. So it's not going to, it's not going to expire. But if at some point, they decided they wanted to make a change or it wasn't working for them, that's really the only option I can see, is they'd have to come back and apply for a new special use permit that, again, didn't, and seek to not have those restrictions imposed.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment as proposed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the amendment passes six in favor and zero opposed. That brings us to the main item. Any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just for point of conversation, clarification, special use permit conditions can be placed on at the Planning Commission level. They chose not to do so, which is fine. Working with the community, being the district representative, representing the Inglewood Business Association, the neighborhood around there, and also the applicant, who did take their time and liberty to come and meet with them. It is the role of the city council to be able to protect our neighborhoods and use the special use permit in process where applicable and allowable.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-five zero seven four? Seeing no further discussion on twenty-five zero, no, it's the second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam State Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero seven four.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero seven four passes six in favor, zero opposed. We now have a full public hearing. We'll open this public hearing.
A full public hearing for a retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink for Poor Decisions that will be located at 925 East US 24 Highway. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is seeking a liquor license for the retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink. This is located at 925 East US 24 for Highway. This establishment would be located on the south side of 24 Highway, just east of College, between College and Doris. So a little bit east of where Van Horn High, or William Christman High School is on the south side. This location was the former Wild Stallions, which closed a little over a year ago in July of 2024. The new owner purchased it in May of this year and is seeking to operate this facility the same way that Wild Stallions was operated with the retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink. This establishment is within 300 feet of residential, so the city council approval is required. For informational purposes, there is one other liquor license within 1,000 feet of this facility. With that, I have nothing further to provide.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council's perspective? This is a full public hearing, so I will call three times to allow people to discuss this if they'd like. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only on the retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink at Poor Decisions at 925 East US 24 Highway? Third and final call, anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only on this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing. And then, Madam State Clerk, please proceed on council action. Did you already read that section?
I did not read it.
Okay.
You ready?
Please.
Council actions requested on the application received for Poor Decisions LLC for retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink for Poor Decisions that will be located at 925 East US 24 Highway.
Any discussion? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just out of conversation, there's been no objections or concerns raised to the council office regarding this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the liquor license is approved for Poor Decisions at 925 East US 24 Highway. Mr. City Counselor, I have a procedural question.
Yes, sir.
On the full public hearing for the tax item, it was brought to my attention, I did not, in fact, call for, three times for people to be able to speak on that item. And would it be appropriate for me now to, because that was a public hearing, we're still in the public hearing sections of this meeting, would it be appropriate for me to call for that three times instead? Anyone wanted to call, in fact, talk on the tax issues facing the city of Independence?
While I don't recall that you called for it three times, I do believe you opened and closed the public hearing, correct?
Right.
So it's certainly, I understand it's your preference to do the three announcements. There's nothing that requires that. And so because we have now properly opened and closed the public hearing, my recommendation would be to, that we move on.
Okay.
Because I guess the alternative would be, we would need, there would need to be a motion to go back and reopen the public hearing.
Right.
If that was someone's preference.
And I'm just going to look over the crowd and see if there's anyone who has a desire to talk on it. And I don't see anyone that's standing up or approaching the dais to do that. So with that being said, we'll proceed with that recommendation, but I wanted to make that known. That brings us to ordinances, twenty-five zero sixty-nine. Thank you, Mr. City Counselor, for your recommendation.
Yes, sir.
There is twenty-five zero sixty-nine. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero six nine, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of $81,370 for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and execute the community center services agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, this is one of the important partnerships we have with Mid-America Regional Council. And so we get federal funds that come down, and then they're able to disperse those. And I know that we have expanded our feeding program. Can you tell me how many seniors benefit from this grant?
I'm going to ask our Parks and Recreation Director to expound on that for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Morris Heide, Director of Parks and Recreation. I can share with you in regards to the impact, the 2024 calendar year, number of meals we shared. So in 2024, based on this grant, we were able to serve 16, almost 17,000, 16,628 lunch meals, noon meals. We had 11,555 home-delivered frozen meals served or delivered. And also, we had 305 boxes of supplemental food distributed. So quite a big impact. Again, that was 2024 calendar year numbers.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero sixty-nine.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero sixty-nine passes six in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to twenty-five zero seven zero. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven zero, second reading, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 2025 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA memorandum of understanding for the Kansas City/Overland Park DEA Task Force Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $165,015, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero seven zero? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero seven zero passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero seven one. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven one, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the 2025 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA memorandum of understanding for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $135,054.31, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero seven one? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero seven one passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero seven two. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven two, second reading, an ordinance amending the Independence City Code Section 5.01.023, license, denial, suspension, or revocation. Second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-five zero seven two? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-five zero seven two passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero seven five. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven five, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat for Little Blue Estates, plat 1B, located on Quail Drive west of Jackson Drive in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero seven five? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero seven five passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven seven, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the annual neighborhood sanitary sewer project, project number 302004-1, authorizing negotiation with property owners and the initiation of eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, and authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in connection with the project. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero seven eight, first reading, an ordinance repealing Section 14-901 HSQ District and adding a Section 14-901 HSQ District of the Unified Development Ordinance. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero seven nine, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-6 Single Family Residential to District R-6 slash PUD Single Family Residential slash Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 1316 South Osage Street. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero eight zero, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 3417 South Denton Road in Independence, Missouri. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero eight one, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary for the holding of a primary and general election within the City of Independence, Missouri, in compliance with the charter adopted by said city as amended and all state laws in reference thereto, and to certify the Jackson County Board of Election Commissioners all names of candidates properly presented by petitions under the charter and for the holding of a primary election on February 3, 2026, and a general election on April 7, 2026. First reading.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Just to say that it's been a busy last couple of weeks, a number of things coming up that we've been working on, but also a number of things that we dealt with tonight. And so that's good. And other than that, I hope everybody had a good Labor Day and a good trip up to Santa Calagon and enjoyed the time up there and ate a funnel cake or a corn dog or something. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things tonight. It has been a busy couple of weeks since we met last. First, I had the opportunity to meet with some citizens of our community who have enrolled in Citizens Academy. Several of us were able to meet with them and speak with them. So over the next seven weeks, they're going to get a behind-the-scenes look at how city government works. I'm really excited for them to meet our wonderful staff and see the services that keep Independence running. It was nice to see a group of people that care so much about their city that they are going to do this big time commitment on Thursday nights. And I was able to do the Citizens Academy for the Police Department last year. If you can do those academies, they're wonderful, really worth your time. I also have been able to observe the city manager recruitment meetings. They've been really productive. And I wanted to send a special thank you to the city staff who took the time to fill out a survey. And we received some really great potential interview questions and some really good feedback. And then I did want to mention Santa Calagon, which I've been going to since the late '70s. It's one of my favorite things that happens in Independence. I especially appreciated this year, there was a lot of new vendors. I especially appreciated this year, there was a lot of new vendors. So thank you to the volunteers and organizers who made it possible. And then lastly, last week, the mayor and I attended a vigil for a young man named Deacon Robinson, who's a Fort Osage High School student, who lost his life to an accidental fentanyl ingestion. Each year, his family and friends gather at Santa Fe Park to honor his memory, advocate for reform, and distribute Narcan. This year, the mayor proclaimed August twenty-sixth as Forever Deacon Day. My heart goes out to his family and friends, and we really appreciated meeting them and listening to their story. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may see little tiny piles of dirt in your front yard as AT&amp;T has been coming through and laying fiber, and Google has been coming through and laying fiber. One of the things that we're seeing is that as there is more competition, we actually have been seeing that Comcast holds a smaller percentage of the cable network and connectivity. And if you are somebody who has been using City Seven to watch city meetings, you are in a smaller and smaller minority, as more people are moving to watch them on YouTube on the dedicated channel for the city. So as that big shift is happening in the market, we are really looking at what is the best way to make sure that our services, our meetings are available to the public. And so I know that there are costs associated with City Seven. I'm going to ask that the city manager take a look at what those costs are and see if it turns out that YouTube is the best approach for that. How can we do some tech support for our community to be sure that they can continue to watch the meetings? Because that's a big part of participating in democracy. So I would appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Please proceed.
Two other things. Thank you. Councilmember Fears and I went to meet with MoDOT engineers. They had a public hearing held over at our new Mid-Continent Public Library, and it was well-attended. People came and looked at the layouts. They are looking at the intersection at forty and four-seventy, which is a place that we continuously have car accidents. I tell you, I see one every two weeks, and not little accidents, big like car-smashed accidents. And because of that, it's caught the attention of MoDOT. They have been looking at how they can redirect traffic so that it's safer for everybody. They are proposing one of these crossover exits. I know that tends to freak people out when they end up on the wrong side of the road, but you're seeing more and more of them as they do traffic redesigns. If you are my father, your approach to these is to stop dead in the middle of the road because you were on the wrong side. After he'd gone through one more than once, he was like, okay, I get it. But I want you to know that those conversations are happening. You are free to give your input. Their second-place plan is a much more crowded lane configuration. If you ever drive over there and you are next to a big truck, that lane isn't big enough for you and the big truck. So they don't like that option because it isn't nearly as elegant or safe. So I voted strongly in favor of option number one with the crossover exit. So they are still taking input. If you are interested in giving that, I'm happy to. I brought the QR code if you're, if you'd like to get information on that. You can also get on the MoDOT website, and there's places to leave comments. The last one is Inglewood Theater on September ninth is going to be having a public meeting, I think. Councilmember Perkins is going to talk a little bit about that. And just, I encourage our multiple theater groups to come to that and bring their best ideas so we can come to some kind of common ground on what could be a potentially wonderful asset for the community. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will further the conversations. Councilwoman McCandless was discussing, there is going to be a community meeting on the feasibility study. So the Friends of Inglewood Theater will hold a community meeting with PJV planners to go over the, their major findings on the feasibility study Tuesday, September ninth, six PM, in Inglewood Arts Center, and that's at one-zero-nine-zero-one. They will discuss their, their findings, but the main thing is to be able to get public input and conversation about what the Ben Franklin and the Inglewood Theater could potentially hold and do and look into the future. So we would look forward to see everybody there that night. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Wiley, thank you for remembering Deacon Robinson, and that was a very memorable night. They did a balloon release for the family, and his mother was very touching, and so, but that's one of the most difficult things that we do, is visit with families who have lost a loved one due to drug overdoses. I also want to thank this council for their resolution, imaginary resolution, six weeks